Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Holyoke Public Schools Committee meeting. Today is April twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. I do want to apologize for our late start. A meeting will start now at six oh eight P. M. Can we please have roll call, please, Ms. Garcia?
Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Ms. LaFaye.
Present.
Now.
Here.
Mr. Romero.
Here.
Ms. Rivera Colón.
Here.
Ms. Feliciano.
Here.
Mr. Willehan.
Here.
Mr. Calamore.
Here.
And Ms. Wilson.
Here.
All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's not speaker out there.
Was that Ms. Brunel? She was like. Oh.
Oh, can you hear me?
We were here. You totally threw me off. I'm like, oh, my God, what word are we on right now?
So I was just making sure I was saying it, you know?
You were doing great. You led the crew. Thank you.
You're welcome, Ms. LaFaye.
All right, so welcome, everyone. Really quickly, as you can see, we have two of our school committee members that are on Zoom this evening. We have Ms. Brunel, our at-large school committee member, and the Chair of the School Committee, Mayor Garcia. With that being said, any votes that we will be taking this evening, which would only be the Finance Committee Subcommittee Meeting Minutes, will be based on the roll call. So just want to give a friendly reminder that on March twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, Governor Healey signed into law an act relative to extending certain state of emergency accommodations, which, among other things, extends the expiration of the provisions pertaining to the open meeting law to March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. Specifically, this extension allows public bodies to continue holding meetings remotely without a quorum of the public body physically present at a meeting location and to provide adequate alternative access to remote meetings. The act does not make any new changes to the open meeting law other than extending the expiration date of the temporary provisions regarding remote meetings from March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three to March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. So pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty, I am hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made of the meeting, and the meeting is being livestreamed and run on the city's community TV channel. That was a long paragraph. You will hear it every month. So we're going to go ahead and start off with student showcase, and I believe today we have the Holyoke Middle School.
Yeah, I just want to call up our Principal Rue. If you could just come up and introduce our student showcase.
So. Thanks for having us. So we brought our cheer team, and we brought our cheer team for three reasons. First is Coach Harena, who is one of the best coaches I've ever met in my entire life. We, our school is around for one year, and at the beginning of the year, she said, we're going to have a cheer team this year, and we're going to make sure that this happens. She has everything that you're seeing, she has made happen. The second is, this is our longest-standing team in our school, and these student athletes are held to really high academic behavior standards, and they've been practicing since October and have maintained those standards throughout the entire time. And then the third is a little bit more personal. Our school suffered a really serious loss a couple of weeks ago, and Devont Bird was a member of this team. And this has been very difficult for the school, but for this team in particular, but they have shown enormous amounts of grace and strength and leadership for other students and for family members. And we're just sort of placing that position have done. It's not surprising that they stepped up like that, but they did. They're just really tremendous people. And they're really tremendous leaders now, and they're going to be tremendous leaders in the future, so we're really excited about that. So without any further ado, Coach Harena and our cheer.
So I wasn't able to bring the entire cheer team because it's after school hours and kind of hard to get them all here. There are three of them in the hallway right now. Not sure what's going on, so I'm trying to get them over. But they're just going to show you a quick cheer. We've done quite a few. We're hoping that next year I'll be at Sullivan, that we can get them out a little more. I was able to get them into the parade. But they didn't get to do nearly as much as I was hoping. So maybe, you know, next year, we can get a little bit more support and get them out there a little bit more because they did such a good job, and they wanted to showcase, and they haven't really been able to. So at least now we can have them do one of their cheers. All right.
Do we want to move the microphone? Use up all the speed. Um, it's all over. Yeah. Do we need to move our tables back or anything? Any loose shoes have to be towards him, so if your shoe's going to come off. Do like a kick. Yeah, yes. You can do it. You can do it. We got this. Hey, hey. Hey, hey, ready, go.
Hey, hey, get out of the way. We're the wolves that are here to stay. If you want to be the best, better than the rest, you got to work it, work it, work it.
Ready, buddy. That was really good. Anybody have any comments, questions?
Are they all going to move up to the high school and help us out?
Their last year, so I kind of like. But yeah, the eighth graders will be going to high school, but we still have the sixth and seventh graders, so I really, any support to get them to basketball games next year or any events would be amazing because they deserve to be shown as well. They're part of our community as well.
Absolutely. Any other questions, comments? I'm just looking to see. Ms. Wilson.
So I was just saying, I was so glad that you were part of the parade because I was definitely, I saw you all there, and I was so happy that you were able to participate, and hopefully you'll be able to do that in the future as well.
So do we still have the intermural?
We have play, we have an organization called Play Ball. So we have flag football, we have volleyball, and we have basketball. But I don't think the cheer team has been a part of the Ave Day. Yeah, we do it out of the Boys Club, and they limit. Actually, there's really no spectators allowed in the Boys Club, which you know, it's a partnership with Play Ball, Holyoke Public Schools, and the Boys Club. Got to respect their rules, but we, that's something. Yeah, we could definitely talk about that for next year. So there's or even, maybe even this during the flag football this year, which is outdoor. I think there could be an opportunity to get, to go and support your team for sure. But I just wanted to say thank you all for coming up here. I know that takes a lot of courage and bravery. And thank you, Ms. Harena. I remember your first day here. I was at Holyoke Middle School, and she said, I'm going to start a cheer team. And I said, you go, girl, you do that. And she did it. I mean, the jackets are fire, the outfits, your moves, everything about it is amazing. You guys marched with us in the parade. You did an amazing job. And I was also a part of the memorial that you guys played a huge role in. And I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart. That was amazing. I'm sure the family really appreciated. This, for those of you that don't know, they organized this memorial for Devont Bird. It was all student-led, like everything from the slideshow to the speeches to everything, 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 everything. They organized the entire thing, and it was just such a proud moment during a really sad time for the school. It was really uplifting to see how all of you come together and do something really nice to commemorate, in memory of Devont Bird. And I know his, sitting right next to his mom, she really appreciated that. So you guys deserve a lot of credit, and I want to thank you again.
Absolutely. Yeah, I was just going to ask the jackets. I really like the jackets. Oh, okay.
I used to always go to her when I was coaching before, and I was like, I want to get the kids started, and I want them to have everything. They have the complete uniform, so they have everything. They were going to wear them today. But then some of them were like, can we just wear our jackets? So we let it slide. But they've got their sneakers, they've got customized bows with their names on them.
Wow.
I did everything, yep. Tried to make everything so they can feel included, and you know, they're so excited. They got certificates when they made the team. And then our biggest thing was the parade, and we were able to go to Hoyokai, but they had to learn their cheers in half hour, so they weren't able to showcase like what they know. So it was a little tough, so I'm like, really hoping that next year they can get something so they can show their parents and their peers what they learned. And then, you know, we were doing fundraisers because we didn't have much. We were starting brand-new. And our school is just one year, so we don't have much, but I was going to reach out to see if we could get mats or anything that's even used, like the old, the Hoyokai cheerleaders don't use. Because so we can do stunting because I can teach them all that, and so I want them to do good, and I want them to be able to show what they can do as well. And it's cute, they're middle schoolers, you know, they're not the high schoolers, so they're they're looking forward to being with the high schoolers. And usually my kids make varsity, they always make the team because you know, they're good, and I teach them, and I'm tough with them. I show them that tough love. Yep, I'm like a mama to them, though. They know it.
Well, no, that, you know, that's great. I'm just thinking, you know, like fundraising, stuff that, so that we can promote, and the Springfield Puerto Rican Parade is coming up. That's another avenue.
Yes, that would be awesome.
Getting involved in, you know, just thinking of different different platforms to get them more out there and seen and.
Yeah, and I'm willing to do all that because where I was before, we weren't allowed to do like fundraising with car washes, but I see the kids in Hoyokai doing stuff like that, so I was like, maybe I could set something up because I know they'd all like to help out and make some money for them. I bake, so sometimes I'm like, well, maybe I'll just bake, and we'll sell stuff, but we can only make so much. But they got pretty much everything, but I'm going to have a whole new group of kids, and sometimes the money is tough, so I like to do fundraising so that we can support the ones that don't have it. And that way, everybody feels comfortable, and they don't have to worry about the money, the money part, but yeah, I just want them to grow and be shown a little more.
And cheer competition, I watch.
Yes, that'd be awesome.
Right? Let us know whatever help that we can provide, okay? Thank you so much for coming, guys. You did a marvelous job. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I'm just upset that nobody's shoe went flying off. I was so looking forward to it.
In case you can't see, Josh and I have hands up.
Oh, my bad. Mayor Garcia.
Go ahead, Erin.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. I appreciate that. So I just wanted to thank them for coming. I think that's wonderful. And definitely could see them, you know, using that, that new school space potentially in the future to be hosting all of those intermural sports that the city is starting to offer more and more of. And also, I just wanted to let her know she could definitely follow up with the, I think it's through Mel's office or maybe the school department to create an official booster club for the cheer team, and that way she can officially fundraise and have events like car washes and things like that. You just have to set up the formal bank account. But my sister used to run the booster club for the cheer team at the high school, so if she wants to follow up with me, I can get her more information on how to do that. And maybe even cheering at like some of the eighth grade graduations coming up if schools are having them. And then, did she say she was going to be at Sullivan next year, starting next year? I can't hear her at all.
I'll be at Sullivan.
Oh, great. Great. Thanks.
Thank you. I'll definitely reach out because I need any support that we could get, so I'll be reaching out.
Mayor Garcia?
Yep, just going to add, on the subject of funding and support, if you need money, let me know. I know a guy. His last name is Soto. He's got some money over there. We can. Plenty, there's plenty of it.
Soto, really?
I'll be asking now. Thank you. Thank you so much, Mayor.
She'll be following up later after the meeting. All right, well, thank you again for coming. I really appreciate it. Thank you, Principal Rue.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Absolutely. We're going to go ahead and move to public comment. Ms. Garcia, did anybody sign up for public comment or submit anything online? Oh, somebody left their keys. Say, you ain't going nowhere. I'm sorry, Ms. Garcia, did anybody sign up or submit online?
No public comment.
So no public comment. We're going to go ahead and move on to communications and reports. So we're going to start off with student reports, and I do have Mr. Kennedy here this evening, so if you want to go ahead and start off with your report.
All right. Bear with me here, guys. I'm sorry. All right, so first things first, Carpentry is currently building the school store. Opportunities for the nine different CTE programs to provide merchandise to sell and promote their services. For example, Carpentry will be selling chessboards, cutting boards, et cetera. This is also a good opportunity to also opportunities to have this be a place for students to get information about sports signups, clubs, and other district programming. Next, Habitat for Humanity is currently partner, is currently partnering with the Dean Camp, Dean Tech Carpentry Program to give our students the opportunity to volunteer side by side to build a house in Hoyoke for a family. Juniors and seniors have been going out for several weeks now and enjoying the experience. You can follow the Dean Instagram page to keep up with their journey. Now on co-op updates, a big thanks to Superintendent Soto for moving, for the support in moving forward with the CTE schedule. One of our main goals is to shift our schedule to a more traditional vocational schedule, which will greatly benefit the juniors and seniors looking for co-op opportunities. Out of, out of around one hundred and fifty-five eligible juniors and seniors, ninety-five students applied for co-op. Currently, we have twelve students co-op ready. Additionally, we still have juniors still have time to apply. The deadline is the middle of May. Twenty students have been placed or found co-op and were placed. Seven out of nine programs have students out in their field. Auto Collision has led this, has led this year with a total of six eleventh and twelfth graders out working. Now, our new pro, our new co-op program didn't kick off until January. We hope this is a sign for more jobs to come. If you know of any local businesses that are looking forward to building partnerships and getting involved, please reach out to our college and career counselor, Savannah Hennessy, and/or our CTE Director and Co-op Coordinator, Chris Kelly. You will have all their information shortly. On May ninth, from three-thirty to four-thirty P. M., the Holyoke Chamber of Commerce will team up for, for one final opportunity to bring in local businesses to meet our graduating seniors before they graduate on June first. We are also going to invite any juniors who would like to come by and network. We are hoping for a good turnout. We have many students who are going, going to be an asset to local businesses regardless of their current co-op status. Please help us spread the word. Next, Make-A-Wish, the Make-A-Wish Foundation and Dean Tech have partnered up to have a car show, which you all have the flyer to, on May sixth, from nine A. M. to five P. M. to support four Hoyoke Make-A-Wish recipients. All nine CTE programs have a partner, excuse me, no, have a part in this huge event led by Mr. Vera and student government representatives. The Holyoke, the Holyoke Fire Department and Police Department, along with the Boys and Girls Club, just to name a few, will be at the car show. Owner Jose Ramos, I hope I said that right, from Ramos Detail on South Street, has donated two generous raffle prizes, which are full card, full car details and window tint treatment. On May, on March thirty-first, Daishliz Torres represented the city of Hoyoke in Massachusetts State Senate. Senator Torres was the only student from Hoyoke who participated in Student Government Day at the State House, and she joined her colleagues from across the Commonwealth in debating Senate Bill four forty-eight, an act ensuring municipal participation of the widest eligible range. Next, student government will be having a public forum for all students to address concerns and ideas to improve the school culture and grounds on Thursday, May fourth, at two thirty-five. We invite you all to the forum on that day. Okay. National Technical Honor Society celebrated and inducted in induction will be held on May fourth from eight thirty A. M. to ten A. M. We invite you all to come by on that day. A formal invitation will be sent out. On April thirteenth, in Worcester, Josue Montanez was celebrated being named the most outstanding vocational student of the year. He is a senior in the electrical shop and is currently out on co-op as an electrical apprentice. April Vacation Academy was a success. On average, thirteen students showed up and tackled a variety of real-life math skills, which, with, with a touch of social emotional learning skills. And finally, the math department will be holding MCAS review sessions. Yes, MCAS review sessions at the beginning of April. I'm sorry, I read that wrong. Beginning April twenty-sixth for one hour following the school day. Every Wednesday through the week before MCAS, our math team, our math team will welcome students to get, get some extra prep. All tenth-grade students are welcome to attend to attend to prepare for the May sixteenth and seventeenth Math MCAS. I know that was a lot of dates, and I'm sorry if you did not get that all down. You will be receiving all of the information, like all the dates, all the times, and all that. I am happy to ask any questions if you have any immediate questions.
Mr. Calamore?
I don't have the list of the different shops.
I would say that, I saw the list today, so the shop that's leading the charge is Auto Collision. They have six students, and then the rest are spread out, and, and the two that that I wish we had, like, we have students that are ready and willing, are Carpentry and, Carpentry and and Cosmetology. We don't have business partners right now that are ready to take, take in students. So like, this is my plea to the community. We, I know there's some students that are ready in our Cosmetology shop to get some experience, so Al's going to be, you know, I talked to him today. I was surprised to see that, and, and but, but I think that, to answer your question, it's all of our shops. The two that I know don't have any kids on co-op but have kids ready are Carpentry and Cosmetology. So the, the rest of them are like two, one, three, but Auto Collision is the one that has six students out right now on co-ops, which is, which is amazing.
Can I, do you know, can I follow up on a question from something you said?
Go ahead, Ms. Wilson.
Thank you. For Cosmetology, do they have their thousand hours in, do you know, for their state licensure?
Well, they can't, I don't know that they could practice, but they can certainly get field experience, you know, as an apprentice, not, not as like a professional, right? We have, we have kids ready. We just need partners, so.
Okay.
So, you know, if, if funding wasn't, you know, the conversation that I had with, with Al today was if funding's an issue with, you know, is there, are they willing to take some interns that, that like would, I know would love, even if they're not getting paid, they would love to get that experience, put it on their resume. But I'm sure there's somebody out there that thing about Cosmetology, from what I know, and Jackie Gashin confirmed it, is that there's a, you know, it's, it's very busy from Thursday to Saturday. And usually like Monday to Wednesday, there's a skeleton crew. Not, not a ton of, of work aren't, you know, attending that as much. It's real busy in the weekend, so maybe that schedule has something to do with it where they can't take students every day of the week, but we're, you know, the team is aware that I, you know, we're looking to place students, and they're going to, they're going to try to be creative and find some some local businesses in the community that would be willing to take some of our students that are ready.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Kennedy, Ms. Feliciano?
I don't know. Does the co-ops have to specifically in Hoyoke? I mean, I know that's the hardest for you guys, but I'm just thinking outside of the box, right? Like, I know.
That would be ideal, but like, if, you know, depending on the student and whether or not they have a car and all that, like, you know, I would, I would just, we could work with the school. If you have somebody interested, we could work with the school to figure out if there's a good candidate that would be able to be outside of the city. But it's not, it's definitely not mandatory because we have two kids that are in our electrical shop right now that are working in Amherst, the town of Amherst.
Any other questions or comment? Just an FYI for, so that Senate bill I was looking up, so it has to do with age participation for voting, so age, ages sixteen and seventeen. I was looking on who signed on. Nobody in this part of the neck of the woods, so it's something that is ongoing. Expanding the age on ability to vote. Alrighty. Do we have the representative for Hoyoke High School North? Nope. Okay. All right, so we'll follow up with them next month. The next section is.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
We'll be right back. Don't worry, you're good. The next is Report of the Vice Chair. The only thing that I'm going to talk about this evening is the school committee training dates. Tonight, we were supposed to start that. Unfortunately, unfortunately, we couldn't. Uh, we're, we couldn't, um, based on when we needed to do the school committee meeting. So please jot this down. May twenty-second will be our training date. And what these training dates are for is um. As we're, we're looking at moving out of receivership, it's very important that we first. Um, go through the full training on what our role is as school committee members. So May twenty-second here in the Fiefeld Room, six P M. June twenty-sixth. Six P M here in the Fiefeld Room. June twenty-sixth, yep. Now in May, we need to decide how we're gonna move forward with the third one. Do we wanna meet in July? Um, do we wanna add another day in June? Um, but. We need three more days of training because we were putting together like two topics. That kind of goes together versus doing six more trainings. Do y'all harp on that one? Think about it. We can either do six trainings or you can do three and bang them out, but if we, if. Our goal is to get out of receivership, this is one of the first steps that needs to be taken. So we can go ahead and keep lasting another year. In receivership or. Figure out how we get this done, but we gotta get it done. We need our certificate. Lawrence School District already got theirs. Alright, so that's it for me. Now we'll go ahead and move to the superintendent receiver reports, um. And I pass it on over to Superintendent Receiver Soto.
Well, we got a a a presentation. I I wanted to. Make sure we brought to the school committee what's gonna be in front of um, the finance subcommittee on Wednesday. So we are gonna be going to the finance subcommittee on Wednesday. Um, and this is literally the presentation that we're gonna be uh, uh, sharing with them. Um, and I'm, you know, this is a really exciting time for this project, you know, we're really. We're close. This is a a very, very important step is getting funding approval from the city council. And uh, it already went to the full committee and they referred it to finance subcommittee, which is gonna be on Wednesday. Um, I'm gonna do my best to present some of these slides quickly, but I'm sure some of you will be at the meeting. Uh, and and we're actually uh, splitting up the presentation, so it's not gonna be me presenting. I think the mayor's gonna kick it off and Aaron Brunel's gonna kick it off. And then I got a portion of it. And then we have uh, some of the consultants that are being, gonna be covering a portion of it. But what I wanted to do was just flip through these so that you guys could get a sense of what's gonna be. In front of the city co- of the finance subcommittee on Wednesday. Um, you know, I think that's just an important part. Um, being being a a school committee member, knowing that, knowing what that meeting's gonna look like on Wednesday. But we're gonna go over purpose and introductions and um. Essentially, we, you know, we're trying to build a new middle school for five hundred and fifty students um, in the fall of twenty. Twenty-five, as early as that. And the the purpose of the meeting that on Wednesday is to seek funding for the new middle school building. At at the Peck location. Um, and anyone, I think everybody in this room has been to the Peck location, so. Um, anybody who has gone there knows how important it is to really uh. You know, tear down that building and get a new building that that to replace that poorly designed and inefficient building that we have. Um, you know, we've have, we have videos on our website that, you know, for those of you that haven't been able to. See the school, but uh, it's definitely needed. Our students deserve it and the time is now for sure. Uh, the mayor's gonna do that introduction. I'm sure he's gonna do a much better job than I just did, but one of the things we are gonna be doing is introducing the. Uh, the building committee. Everybody that you see on this list just put an incredible amount of time. We've been meeting. Almost every, like, we've been meeting once a month for a while and it's been like every couple of weeks. Uh, it's ramped up and, you know, I just wanna thank everybody on that list. Uh, the mayor really prides himself and and I think he's done an amazing job. Some of the feedback that we have gotten. Um, from the first time we went through this is not just the funding, but the makeup of the committee. And the mayor did an incredible job putting together a matrix to make sure that we have representation from every ward. To make sure we have representation from um, you know. Different race, gender, different areas of expertise. Uh, he he did a really good job putting that matrix together. Cause it could tell you like, okay, we're really heavy in this ward and we don't have enough. Uh, in this ward and it'll, it it triggered us to go out and and actively recruit. Or, you know what, the makeup of this board is, you know, we're lacking experience in finance, so let's go out and get that. Um, I thought it was uh, brilliant and and I feel like we really got a diverse uh, board. That is really committed to making sure that this project is successful and 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 that um, we're doing it at a. At a reasonable, reasonable cost that aligns to our educational plan. These are our partners, so uh, top left you see Margaret. She is our O P M. And the rest of these people are are actually Mount Vernon Group. Um, they're the ones that are have designed the building. But Margaret really is the one that's helping us along throughout the entire process, making sure. That we're following the MSBA process, that the designers are doing what they need to do. She really, um, she and and she's been working with us in Holyoke and since the last project. Why Model School and why Mount Vernon Group? We do have a seven-minute video. I'm not gonna share it tonight. Uh, just to save everybody some time, but I'll make sure that that um, it it's already. It was out in the Holyoke update, but we'll make sure we email a copy to all of you. And what the video is, is, you know, it's an introduction from the mayor and myself and um. The school that that is in this video is is pretty much a replica of what we would see. At the Peck site, so it it gives you a an opportunity to see what the school would look like. Uh, that's the cool thing about the model schools is that they've been designed before, they've been built before. You can actually go visit. Uh, the one that, the one that this video showcases is in Marlboro, it's called Goodnow. Um, which um, many of our, our committee have already visited and some are scheduled to visit. Visited one in Ludlow as well, but it wasn't the same design. It was just by the same, by the same designer. The one in Marlboro is actually the same design. Um, so you get a real, real good sense of what the school's gonna look like. Um. I didn't wanna play that. There we go. So, why the model school? Um, one of the things that we committed to early on. You know, I'm I'm all about learning from my mistakes, right? And not not to say that I made a mistake, but. Um, learning, I I feel like, you know, when something goes wrong, I I see that as an opportunity to learn from it. Um, and unfortunately, the last time that that we tried to get. Two middle schools for for the school district, it went to a debt, debt exclusion override and. And it didn't, it didn't pass. That, to me, that kinda went wrong because we don't have two middle schools, but it was an opportunity to really learn. Why did that fail? And the two things that we heard the most were what I just talked about, the makeup of the board, the the committee itself. And then the second thing, which was probably should have been first, was the funding. People did not like. The way that we were funding it, um, the way it, you know, through a debt exclusion. So one of the things that we committed to as a building committee is to make sure that we. Turn over every single leaf, we we explore every single option. We had gone to the city council. Um, earlier this year and we had asked them to appropriate funding for a feasibility study. One of the other things we asked them was, can they also approve us to use the same designers that we used last time? Because the MSBA is not gonna re- reimburse us for the feasibility period this time. So can we use them? Cause they could really, instead of it costing one point two million, it could cost four hundred and seventy-five thousand. But there, that was important, an important step to showing the city council that we're willing to do everything we can to save money. And we, luck luckily, they did approve that, but then, you know, the idea came up of, well, if you wanna save money, why not explore the model school? Option. So, you know, as a committee, we said, sure, like, if it's an option that could save us money, let's explore it. And that's what we did. And the reason why model schools are good and efficient is because, you know, they've been built before. Like, a lot of this list is really about. These schools have been built before. I think the school that we're looking at building here in Holyoke has already been built three times. Um, I could be wrong on the amount, but but it's been built already a few times, one of them being in in Marlboro for sure. So they're efficient, save money on design, um, they're easy to maintain. Um, and then everything checks the box in terms of the spaces that the MSBA wants to see in a school. They've already gone through that process, so um, it's just a much more efficient way of of getting a school, as long as it aligns to your. Educational plan, um, the model school is a is a good option. Uh, the reason we stayed away from it in the past was. You know, we we thought that the site at Peck was so unique. Cause it has such a steep slope that there was no way a model school can fit that design. When they build model schools, they usually build them on flat surfaces. So um, uh, that was. One of the reasons why, you know, the model school just wasn't in um, wasn't explored the last time around. The other good thing about the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So with that, then what's the difference now? It's still on a steep. You got me a little bit confused there.
Committee members, Mildred, different committee members.
Yeah, we.
So it can be built?
It can be built, yes.
Oh, yes.
Yes, so.
You'll see when he gets to the design that the gym is elevated to incorporate, to kind of work with the slope.
The other good thing about the model school process was that the MSBA had agreed. That they would uh, they would reimburse a portion of the cost if we went that route. Um, you know, if we didn't go that route, then then none of the feasibility study. First, so that was another, yet another way that this this process. Um. Saved us uh, 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 saved us money. Uh, Mount Vernon Group, so we looked at Flansburgh, we looked at um, Mount Vernon Group. And we looked at our previous, um, our previous designer. So there were three that we looked at. Um, and eventually, one of them backed out, so we were looking at Mount Vernon Group and Flansburgh. And, you know, the uh, people on the committee really like the the presentation and I think the the biggest thing that. People on the committee talked about was their reputation for coming in at or under budget and and building efficient buildings, so. If you, if you look at all of the MSBA projects over time, there's a scatter plot that's out there. And each dot represents the 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 cost of of the the building. Uh, Mount Vernon Group was consistently below like the average of what it costs to build. Build the projects that the MSBA has worked with. And we checked their references. So actually, there's the answer right there. The design that we that we are looking at was built three times. Uh, once in Lincoln, once in Athol, once in New Bedford, once in Athol, and and most recently in Marlboro. Um, when we called all their references, uh, everybody talked about, they loved their building. And the buildings were on time and they were uh, on budget or under budget. So this is gonna be a, probably where we spend a lot of time with the city council. These are the costs. Um, and Margaret's gonna be going through all of these costs, but you can see. The the main construction costs are about seventy million and the the fees are about ten million and then furniture and fixtures. There's about almost a million dollars there and then technology. And then the, there's obviously a con- uh, construction contingency and an owner's consent. The total project itself is right now estimated to cost about eighty-five point five million. Um. And. That, so that eighty-five million is what the council will be voting on, but a significant portion of that. Is gonna be reimbursable, so I think forty-five million, it'll be on another slide. Forty-five million of that. It's probably what the the MSBA grant. The city's portion closer to.
Ms. Wilson?
And does that include the demolition cost?
It does.
Okay, great, thank you.
So, um, the M V G, Mount Vernon Group, they actually recommended that we bid this out in two packages. So instead of just bidding everything, um, they they thought that we, it would actually save us money. And time in the long run. Whitney Anderson will tell you, like, every single day that goes by, there's an escalation. Like, just one day to the next day, this project is getting more expensive because of escalation. The rising costs of construction. So uh, what they're recommending that we do is that we bid the demolition and site work separately. Which is about, uh, which includes the abatement, the demolition and the site readiness. Um, if we could do that, uh, you know, the the timing would be in July and then the demolition would start in September. And then the second package would be the rest of it. Um, and that saves money because if if you're a contractor and you're gonna build a building. There's contingencies that you build in. Um, if you gotta demolish and you got like, it just adds to the markup. Of, you know, being a contractor and and there being risk when you demolish that building. So bidding it separately, getting that out the way so that when the contractor comes out, the site is already ready and they're just building. They don't have to worry about all that other stuff, um, the site being, you know, the site being what it is. So um, this, I, you know, it's, it's not something that's super popular, but it's a, it's yet another example. Of the building committee seeking creative ways to try to save money um, uh, for this project.
Mr. Wallhand?
Thank you. Um, just to kind of follow up on Mrs. Um, Wilson's comment on the Peck School. If this project is not approved by the city council, I'd just say that happens and if we had to tear down Peck on our own. Couple years on the road, so um, it's true that the state would not reimburse us for that cost. The city would be. On the hook for the the full cost of.
Yeah, so. If we, yeah, that is correct, so um. If the s- if the city decides they need to demolish this building for, to develop it for something else, because we've. Um, you know, it would mean, yes, that. Um, that would be totally on on the city's um, dime. But if this weren't to get approved, our plan would be to move kids in there. Um. Move kids out of Dean. You know, we're talking about growing our vocational programming and that co-location of schools is not really. The uh, ideal for kids. We'd be moving kids out of STEM, moving kids out of McCaff Middle and putting them back into Peck. Which would be really, really, really unfortunate given the conditions of the building. And I do think it opens the city up to. Buy a bit like, if if the electricity, for example, if if that were to go, like. Where would we put our kids? We would have to, you know how, how much work we put into rezoning and figuring out how many? To to have to do that in a week just to get those kids out of there and then to try to repair that building. It would just be an enormous expense and a a and a a crazy disruption to learning. Um, it would be, it would be a wasted school year, like, it would be like super detrimental to. Uh, to the school year if something like that would happen. And and I am genuinely concerned, like, the. The heating systems and the electrical in that building, um, it, they're just not up to date and to. And to get them up to date, it's really, really expensive and the MSBA would not reimburse for that. Bringing that building up to date. They've already told us like that building. We would support tearing it down and and building a new building, but we wouldn't invest money into a building in that condition.
Any other questions?
I don't think you see my hand, hon.
No. Right in with your curtain, honey.
There you go. No, I I'm glad Anthony just mentioned that very last point because that's what I was just gonna reiterate to Mister Willhand too is. Not just the demolition cost, but any improvements that would need to be made to the PEC structure. The MSBA has made it very clear that they will not invest in a building that they don't see viable. So no accelerated accelerated, you know, building repair uh, plans, you know, no money, no help. So every cent that that building would need in res- renovations as we continue to use it would fall back solely on the city.
Thank you. Any other questions?
So I think um, there was a lot of focus the last time around on the reimbursement percentage, but. Um, we really wanna focus on on the positives like. Building this building and and getting this building approved means the city's gonna get forty-five point five million dollars. In grant reimbursement, like that's a lot of money. So and I wanna, you know, I I I feel like we. That's, that's an area where we missed, right? That there was, the last time around, we really talked about the. Percentage reimbursement and this and that, but like, the fact of the matter is, is that. The MSBA is gonna give us forty-five point five million dollars to support this project. Um, and and you know, I think that's a lot of money and I think that the, it's a good, oh, it's a good use of of funds. To 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 do, to get a brand new building, um. For 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 middle schools and we, you know, that we so desperately need. Um, go ahead.
So, because people are always asking about numbers and they always wanna know what's the percentage of. Reimbursement back, so we're looking at fifty-four percent.
Um, let me, let me.
Tracking.
Yeah.
It's important though, if you put things in that way to note that. They do reimburse at a higher rate, but it's only so many dollars per square foot and there's no way to actually build. Within that cost. So it's not that we're, you know, putting in marble staircases or. Privilese design choices. There's literally no way to bring that cost per square foot within that. Um, I'm I'm told at a time that it was balanced, the MSBA used to reimburse fully. But now with, you know, the rate of inflation, it it just doesn't keep up, so.
Yeah, the construction cap really, really kills us.
No, and I get it. I'm just saying, this is all we kept hearing. It's, it was just. Always the same thing. And so I think we still need to mention it's fifty-four percent and no, the state's not gonna pay for it. Yes, we are under receivership, but they're not gonna pay for it. We have to take ownership as well. For our city, right? This, we're saying this is our city, these are our kids, these are our students, so. Either we start stepping up and saying this is what our students need, then or if not, then don't complain that they're here. Because they're not gonna pay to give us the extra amount and they're not gonna pay so that then we don't have, we have a zero liability.
But they are gonna give us forty-five point five million dollars.
Fifty-four percent.
And the reimbursement rate did go up recently, so we're getting more as of today than we would have a year ago. If the project costs the same amount. So that's something to be said as well.
Thank you.
You, Miss Bruno. So then we'll get into the, you know, uh, Rory or the mayor will get into, I think Rory's gonna cover this. But the the reality is, is that thankfully, you know. Josh, I can't say enough about Josh and his work ethic and his ability to figure things out. Like, I feel like that was really missing the last time around. Um, he's, he's really taking the challenge and trying to figure out like. How are we gonna do this without a a debt exclusion? And um, you know, I'm happy to report that based on everything that has been presented by Josh and his team and his consultants. Um, the city can afford to do it without, without a, a, a debt exclusion or an override. Um, if we build one school, so. We've the, the, the city looked at a twenty-year bond, a twenty-five-year bond and a thirty-year bond. And um, that's the, the basically the annual payment before any offsets. Um, and I think, you know, when the mayor presents this, he he and and Rory, they they talk a lot about like. That's the total cost that we gotta go to the MSBA and tell them or to the city council, but. There's mechanisms that we have in place that we could bring that cost down, like use of, you know, use of different like, uh. I, I don't even wanna say it, but you can, uh, there's other funding streams. Um, and the mayor has a a nice little slogan that that he that he can talk to, but I I won't. Um. Here's the the debt schedule here, so uh, the yellow or orange? So let's just say orange, red and blue. The orange represents what the bond payment is right now for the city, what's built into their budget. And that's their debt, basically. Um, the blue line is the debt capacity. So like, we have the capacity to go out and get more debt. Up to that blue line, which is about five point eight million dollars. But right now, where we're at is that four point eight million dollars. Which is that orange line. And based on the debt schedule, all of these projects. You know, you can see by the year twenty forty-two, everything that we have out there right now bonded for. Is gonna be paid off. And you can see there's a pretty big dip in twenty thirty-two. Of debt falling off. I don't, I don't have the details of what that debt is, but the city does. It could be fire trucks, it could be. You know, a- anything that they went out for and bonded is included in that orange. What that red represents is when the new school building is built and when we have to start paying off. The debt. You could see it goes from that orange line to that red line and we never hit the blue line. But for the first five years, there's some uh, there's some money that the the city has set aside already. That they can use to help pay for it over the course of five years. And then eventually, um, you know, it it sta- it it tapers off and you could see. Uh, that how much it would cost, um, the city to, for this project alone. And I know what people are gonna say, well, it's unrealistic to think that the city's not gonna go out and bond for other things, right? Like, what if, you know, the, you need to replace the roof at City Hall or Annex or you need to. Update the fleet um, of police cars. Like, there's a lot of things that the city, or get a dump truck, those things. Then the mayor has done an amazing job with, uh, you know, starting to build that stabilization, capital stabilization fund. That's an option, but the important thing to note on this graph is that that's what the blue is. So the blue is like, that's the 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 ceiling right there. So we still have space in all these years out to be able to meet the needs of the city. Through uh, through our bonding capacity. We didn't si- the the city didn't go and like, put those projects in like, oh, let's put fire trucks in, let's put police cars in, let's. Uh, put a new library in. They didn't put those things in there, but you can, that's what that blue space is. Is that it it's the city, the city will still have room to be able to uh. Keep up with the needs of 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 other capital projects or unforeseen things that come up. Or uh, in the future.
Ms. Wilson.
I'm gonna go back to the previous slide because I I am gonna ask the question about the other funding streams. Um, whether you or uh, you know, Merrick Garcia wanna answer that, but you mentioned that there were other funding streams. That could reduce that.
Yeah.
Debt load. I am gonna ask.
There's a marijuana impact fund that that there's money and I, and I don't know, Josh, if you just wanna. Talk to this.
Yeah, so monies we've collected through mari- marijuana impact fee money that's currently sitting in a dedicated stabilization account. At least those that are uncommitted, unspent. Um, we've been spending a great deal of time working with the different uh, marijuana companies. And the Cannabis Control Commission with getting folks to agree to allow us. To redirect those funds for this specific project. We, we have kind of an inside joke, we call it pot for PEC. Um, but yes, that's where that that's coming from.
All right, thank you.
But and also, um, Anthony, remind me, does, does this graph include the five hundred thousand a year from the schools?
And that's where I'm going to ask a few questions. So yes, it's on this graph under assumptions, right? So we're all assuming that this is how it's gonna go. So the half a million annual offset allocation for from from HPS for thirty years. Is based on who's making that agreement.
It's an agreement that, so we already pay the city for admin fees. And it's very specific, like we pay a portion of the procurement office, we pay a portion of the treasurer's office, we pay a portion of. Whatever. There's a, an agreement every year that uh, that we sign with the city between um. Between the schools and the city. And what we had reached out to the the commissioner on was. Um, the, every community has this agreement, right? So every single community in the Commonwealth has an agreement. Of how much money is the city gonna take from the schools for admin costs? Um, it is a negotiation, right? So it goes back and forth with like, well, I want you to pay this. No, I want you to pay this. And in in many scenarios, it's a way for the city to get money from the school department. And the school department is a huge, usually a huge part of the budget. So. Um, the state has come up with, okay, if you don't, if you guys can't come up with an agreement, we will allow you to use. This uh, admin rate. And it's a rate times the number of student. So what the commissioner agreed to, and he put it in the form of a memo to the mayor, was that. Once we get a new building, we're gonna be saving, we'll, we'll be saving money on on, if there'll be some efficiencies. Um, on utilities, snow removal, probably principles because we're going down, you know, buildings. There, there's definitely efficiencies. And what he said is that we could use that admin rate. Um, and move towards that model that he would approve it because anybody seeking to use that admin rate, they gotta get approval from the commissioner upfront. So we went ahead and we got that approval upfront under the condition that that we actually get this building. So it's not, it's not the school department saying, here's some money. It's the school department saying, here's our net school spending dollars and through the admin agreement. Can take away this much money and that much money is more than what we're paying right now if we use the admin rate. So that's what that's about.
Okay, so I'm I'm not trying to sound, you know, like. You have the commissioner saying this. I don't know about you, but I know I don't plan on being in receivership for thirty years. So he can only speak for right now. Right? So the rate that it would be, this is what I'm just saying. These were some of the things that were brought up, if I recall, the previous, when we were saying that we'd give how much? Was it a million?
It was a million at the time and they said, we want something in writing and we got that.
We wanted in writing, it's not gonna happen and this and that and that and this. And the same thing they're gonna say even for the five hundred thousand, because at the end of the day, when the district gets its. Schools back into local control is still part of the budget, right? And so what if they turn around, if. The new members turn around and say, no, we're not, we're not gonna pay that much. Now it becomes taking away. It'll be taking away from other things. So other student services. That's what I'm. And I'm not trying to be against this.
No, no, don't. Two, two, two things on that point. One, there's always. Going to be uncertainty every year when it comes to local budgets. I mean. You know, you can get a new mayor and they can reprioritize funding sources or whatever, um. Uh, but just making sure that we have, you know, that we're. Continuing to. Keep this forward as a commitment of the body, no matter who comes in, whatever the case, to to be sure that that, that that obligation's being taken care of. Also, number two, the Student Opportunity Act has brought in a great deal of. Uh, funding support uh, for the district, enough flexibility there. You know, I, to the comment about, we have other needs elsewhere, there's funding, there's monies to do stuff, um. So as long as we maintain our our priorities, our commitment and our, uh, to our obligations that we are committing to right now. Through the budget planning process every year for the next thirty years, you know, we should be able to, you know, keep up with that, that commitment. Uh, but to your point though, Mildred, there's, every year, there's always uncertainty, which is why. This budget planning strategy helps us understand how to best navigate uncertainty when it happens. Um. And um, you know, it's, it's hard to really. Say in one hundred percent full confidence that like, nothing is gonna happen or nothing's gonna, you know what I mean? Like, it's just. That's just the, 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 the way of the municipal environment when putting budgets together for, to, to keep up with obligations.
No, and I get it. I'm, the reason why I say it is, it's. When it's being presented especially to the city council and obviously the the residents of Holyoke. These are the questions that's gonna be going through their minds, right? So I'm here. Like, thinking on both ends. This is the ones that want the schools and we're yay, hooray, let's go, go for it, we can do it. And these are the ones that are very cautious, right? And you started off with the word assumptions, so I wouldn't even be putting that word in there. I just.
To, again.
This is the goal.
We, we practiced this over and over and that question that you just asked. We're prepared to answer it.
Okay.
And the whole thing. And just the way that we're answering it right now. So the whole thing is, the financial forecasting model that we have and that we're gonna be building every year. Is critical so that it helps us. Try to understand what those assumptions are. Where the potential pitfalls might be if something were to change and how we can pivot to keep up with it if. If something was to happen. And so that, that is the responsible part of municipal financing and and planning. Um, when you're not reactionary and you're thinking very proactively. To the point where you're able to navigate risk. Everything that we're doing in local government. Is trying to navigate risk and respond appropriately when it happens. Um, I think this budget plan, this this forecast, and mind you, this is. You know, assuming it's just we're taking on the full, what is it, two point six, two point seven million plus the five hundred thousand. This is not including any other additional alternative revenue sources we're looking at. To. Contribute toward that debt amount, so it can actually be much less than what you're seeing now. So the whole point is, number one, we can afford it. And we're not budgeting to the max here. Not only can we afford it, we have enough space here. To navigate risk liability when they happen. Um, and how do we do that? We have tools that we're using. As far as responsible budgeting and management's concerned. So that we can, um. Forecast it, assess it, and when it happens, pivot when we have to. But again, like, I I can't sit here and say, when a counselor asks, what if there's a whole, a new mayor or a new. You're right, like, I can't sit here and say, well, it doesn't matter, they'll be able to commit it to regardless. That is always gonna be the risk when it comes to putting a budget together for the next fiscal year, like. Um. But you know, we're all here advocating for what we need to, making sure we're being responsible. We just gotta make sure that, you know, we maintain our commitments as a city.
And the only last thing is when we're talking about the cannabis host agreement funds for the first five years. Um, I know when originally they came into um, the flats, um, the manufacturing part of it. Um, there was a host agreement in which they were supposed to be providing a certain amount of funding that would be. Divided between Ward one and Ward two, do they still continue to do that, or are we sure that we can?
That's a whole separate. Thing, so we get. For dispensaries, one percent, and for cultivation, three percent. Of the annual of the, of their gross income every single year to the municipality. We collect that money and put it in a dedicated marijuana stabilization account. What you're talking about is. They're part of the host community agreement where it says. There's that, right? The commitment to the municipality, the one percent of the three percent. But then there's another term in the agreement that says that. They're gonna give money to their. Charitable organization of their choice and how they decide to split that up is really entirely up to them, not the city.
That's not what I recall. Oh, when it. But anyways, we'll just, all I'm just worried about is to make sure that. They will be working over the money the way that we're saying that we can. Rely on it for the first five years, that they keep their agreement. And that it's.
Well, no, no, it's, it's whatever we've collected to date. Wh- it's not. So. Whatever's in the pot, the pot for PEC. Cause part of the, part of. What we're negotiating here with the marijuana companies is to eliminate the host. Uh, the payment of these fees moving forward. And so it's gonna be a, a, the total of what we've collected, and the city treasurer has put that money into a high yield account. So he's anticipating. I don't know. Four, five million dollars. In that account to be able to make these annual payments, but. We would be ending future payments. Of um, uh, impact fees from the marijuana companies, and those are things that we're talking about, it's not all. Fully confirmed yet, but, you know, I'm hopeful.
Go ahead.
Okay, um. And you. Look. I think what we're talking about now is some of the resistance that we might get, and. I can tell you. My experience with this has been, we got really close to the goal line, and the goal line gets pushed back. Then we get close to the goal line, and then there's another twenty yard penalty and it gets pushed back, so. I think that I'm so proud of the work of, of the, the committee, cause I felt like. Throughout this entire process, it's been transparent, and we achieved what we set out to achieve, which was. A project that is, is, you know, given the, the makeup of the board. Being diverse and, and, and a transparent process at an affordable cost, I can. Sit here with a straight face and tell you that we explored every possible scenario to save money on this. Uh, but I can't sit here and tell you that everybody's gonna agree, like, there's some, I, there, there's some people that just don't. That might not want this project to happen, and they're gonna, they're gonna create. Every single, every, you know, they're, we're gonna get to the finish line, or to the, uh, goal line, they're gonna move it back. Um, and that's a reality, and, and I, you know, I. Now, we're willing to, to, we're, we're trying really hard to work with every, every time somebody said, well. I don't wanna do it, go get a letter from the commissioner, I don't wanna do it. Go get a, a five-year projection and show, I don't wanna do it, show us how you're gonna fund it. Every time that has happened, the mayor has delivered. And gotten the count, uh, and gotten everything that has been asked for. I can't sit here and tell you that on Wednesday when we go, something's not gonna come out of left field, I'm pretty sure something will. But like, we've done everything that we could, the building committee, the mayor and his team. To, to, to try. To, to show this community. Uh, first of all, everybody in the community says we need it, right? Like, everybody we've talked to. Everybody in leadership says, yes, we need it, but we wanna see X, Y, Z, like, we've gone through the X, Y, Zs, so. There may, we may be maybe getting into the XXs and the ZZs or whatever, but like. You know, we've done everything that we can and, and at some point, we just gotta make a decision as a community, are we moving forward with this? Or not, cause a lot of work has gone into it, a lot of thought has gone into it, we got forty-five million dollars in support from the state. We got, you know, all of this stuff that went into it. You know, I don't know what more we could do to try to convince some people that, that we need to move forward with this.
The, 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 the two tasks were. Build what we need. At the most feasible option. And. There were even moments when. I challenged the committee, I mean, I, I've challenged him, I've. Even felt uncertainty on, on my end, I'm sure, you know, Erin Brunel and I got into a couple of arguments. Um, about it, um, but even though that was the case. You know, that. Empowered the group to continue to. You know, continue to. Make sure that. It's indeed the most feasible option, there isn't a question that I don't think can be thrown our way that, that we're not gonna be able to answer. Um, and that, and that was at least my intent, was to make sure of that, I know there was some. We even looked at, you know, what is it can we take out from the plan, and we took something out, I think there was a hallway or whatever. And there was a road connecting PEC to the high school, as much as everybody loved it. You know, again, we wanna build what we need at the most feasible option, we took it out. Um, uh, so when they ask, hey, did you look at considering to? Take anything out of the design? Absolutely, yes, we did. Uh, so it's. You know, and to, to your point, Mildred, that was one of the questions that came up, like, oh, how do you know this is gonna get funded or whatever? Well, you know, this is why we do X, Y, Z, and. We're, you know, and so forth, so. We're prepared, um. I, you know, as, as far as. Like, this office is concerned, like. And the community is concerned, they wanted something that was feasible within the budget limitations, that's not gonna. You know. Make us go for debt exclusion or even hurt our ability to take on other obligations for the city. The chart you're looking at right now, that is it right there, that is how we're gonna pay for it. So. Uh, if. To Anthony's point, the, the goalposts keep getting moved, so moved, you know, we're curious to see. What comes out of left field, but. You know, I'm, I'm confident that. Whatever comes out of left field, I think we're gonna be ready to answer it, so. No excuses.
Uh, Ms. Feliciano?
Yeah, I. Blows my mind, all the hard work and dedication that you and your team have done, I mean. From where we were at with um, Dr. Jike is kind of amazing, right? I mean, the amount of money that you guys are. Bunch of little leprechauns in a pot trying to like, pull all this little gold out of somewhere, right? Uh, it's quite amazing, and. It would blow my mind, it would absolutely blow my mind, and I, I'm curious. What could possibly be? That the city council cannot say. Yes, I mean, like, what? I have you heard like, one good decent reason other than saying that we can't bond, we can't, we can't pay for it, we don't have the money, we don't have the means? Like, is it because it's in a, in a, is it PEC, is the location? Cause I, let's just call it as it is, you know, we all talk about location and saying like, nah, you know. Should've been in McMahon or something, or, you know, hey, so I, I, I'm just curious as to like. As to, you know, that pigeon that drops the little paper and floats away and says whatever, what can possibly?
We'll have to wait until Wednesday.
So I, okay, so I, yeah, so I.
I can comment to that, so before, before the mayor's office put their projections together. That was really the main thing that some of the counselors on the finance committee were looking for. You know, there's one in particular that kept raising the flag, well, you know, what if we have to bond for a fire truck in the future? You know, to Josh's point, this is where we're talking about, well, the city just has to go with its priorities. You know, education is the foundation to everything, if you want. Everything else to be better in your community, you have to provide a better education, so at some point, we have to. We have to put that first, and so that's gonna be the ultimate choice that the counselors will be faced with. They wanted the mayor to prove he could pay for it, him and Rory have done extensive work doing just that. So, you know, hopefully we have at least nine votes, and if we can have, you know. The full, the full council, fourteen or fifteen, whatever it is, great, but, you know, um. There, I'm sure there's gonna be some that have points against it, you know, what, the last time around, the main thing was. Why two schools? Bring us a one school option, well, here it is, bring us the most affordable option, well, here it is. Well, what is the school district gonna do to help make it affordable? Here's the five hundred K, and that's what the gentlemen are referencing by, like, they're always moving that goalpost. So we've fulfilled everything, and I think at the end of the day, there's just gonna be some people that you're not gonna be able to satisfy, and. We just have to present our best package for it, and you know, I wholeheartedly believe that. With all the efforts that's been put in, and that's exactly what we're gonna be doing.
And then this is where I'm gonna say, again, it goes back to the voters, right? It goes back to our voters saying, hey, call your city councilor, you know. Ask him where he's saying he or she stands on this situation, because it is, it's an investment, right? We continue saying, let's invest in our city, let's invest in our children. Let's invest in our community, this is the prime example of the investment, again, the fire truck can come back. We can say, oh, we need a desperate fire truck, we will figure it out, right? Cause the city always does, so again, I just encourage people to reach out.
We'll, we'll have money to buy a fire truck.
Right, no, I know that, trust me, um, this is again, right, that goalpost keeps on being pushed back, but it's just again, having that conversation. You know, families having those conversations, our children really do deserve it, um, know where your city councilor, because again, voting is right around the corner. You know, so.
Don't get it wrong, like, I do, I do. I'm, I guess I'm a little, I'm optimistic that this will be strongly supported, probably. I think. I'm gonna call it, I think it's gonna be a unanimous. Uh, support of the council, um, obviously, you know, there, there's always. A possibility, um, but. This team has done so much work, even reaching out to finance committee members and doing. Kind of, I don't know, call it a mock presentation, one by one, um, with the members, and. When members left, what did we do right, what did we do wrong, how can we fix it, how can we better? You know what I mean? And in that process, just in that process alone, the feedback was positive. Um, the biggest concern is how we're gonna pay for it. Um, you know, we've, we've came up with a, a presentation of. How we're gonna do that, the, the one thing I didn't. I didn't share with you that we're also gonna present to the council is. You know, part of our strategy here is. Things that have been voted to authorize to bond for capital needs. I have. Um, when it comes time to pay for those. We've been pivoting on how to pay for it, so instead of just going out and borrow, even though the authorization was made. We've been able to find money in the budget to keep up with those obligations. And not only the budget, but also using alternative revenue sources, so we've been limiting. Our borrowing capacity as much as possible. So that we're saving it for this. And then also, because we're coming up with a capital plan strategy and building up the reserves. For future capital planning, that's to limit bonding for future projects as well, so. So that last resort, when we do need. To pay, to, to pay for that large capital expense. That, we don't have to bond for it, that we can take care of it within our own, um, budget. Uh, and over time, that's only gonna allow us to roll off more debt, our bond. You know, capacity is gonna grow more and more, and. Um, so those are just little strategies that, that things are being implemented so that. We continue to prove that we can take care of city emergencies when they happen. While also taking on this debt, so. You know, I feel like that's gonna address a lot of those concerns we've heard over and over, um, from certain counselors. Um, I think those counselors do want this school built, um. Uh, you know, we've learned a lot together through the voting. Of the two middle schools, I don't think at all it wasn't because nobody wanted any school to be built, so. Here, we now have an option that's really answered. All of those concerns, uh, plus some. And because of that, I, I. I wanna remain optimistic that it will be a, a unanimous support, so we'll see on, on a, at the meeting.
Um, real quickly, Ms. Garcia, um, if. And Ms. Brunel got kicked off because her computer died, but she's trying to get back in with her phone, uh, Ms. Rivera Cologne.
Last time when. When the two schools were proposed, I had, um. Right here in the, in our lobby, there were two students from Holyoke STEM. Academy, and they looked at the model. And they, they said, this is supposed to be for middle schools, they'll never build that for us. And that broke my heart then. And we can't fail again. Like, this would be the same students again, having another opportunity, another rendering of something that could be for them. If we fail them again, like, when is then the city gonna invest in our education? We can invest in many different things, you can invest in different parts of the city that are important. But just like it was said before, without education. You don't get any of the, of the other parts of the city, so. I would be shocked to see people not really wanting to invest in this. And if there are people who don't feel like. The due diligence has been done in all of the previous, um. Things that have come up in order to say that, oh, no, we need to consider this X or Y, whatever that is. Then we have to be paying attention. About who are not wanting to invest in our children's education, like, that cannot. Be allowed to continue to happen. Because just like before, we saw that video that came back, that was about. The same situation about investing in our students, and this, here, we have another opportunity to be able to do that, and. It's way overdue. Every time that something happens in our city, we're able to rise up to the occasion, we're able to really. Come together as a community and solve it, we will be able to do that again if that was the case. But we need to stand, start investing in our students, in our kids. Because they're the ones who are gonna take care of us in the future, and if we're not investing in them now. We're actually taking away a lot of money in the future of the city, cause we're gonna have to invest in other infrastructures. Because there's not gonna be anybody left to be able to run the city.
Thank you, Ms. Rivera Cologne, Mr. Collmore?
Yes, uh. On this committee that's been working for two years now, and even, and even longer than that. They've been doing such a wonderful job of bringing the public. Into the fold and letting them exactly what's going on all this time, and it's very, very important because. Peter Tallman, who is. On the city council and chairman of uh, finance committee. Has kept this, other members of the city council really, really informed on. Exactly what our approach is, where the money is coming from, and even to the point where, uh. Sitting down and talking to the budget. Cutting things. Out of that. So we could save. For example, the gymnasium at, at the school, you know, a lot of us wanted. Bleachers on both sides in the gymnasium. But. We discussed it, and it was very, very well discussed, you know, just a short. Distance away at the high school, you have bleachers on both sides that could take care of any big capacity. Event that we have, so we, we really didn't need at the PEC school. Uh, bleachers on each side, so that was eliminated, and then we turned around and we looked at. Then now that we saved that, saved that money for new bleachers and a new locker room and stuff like this. What can we do to make it better, that area of the school? And it, it came up to where, uh, we were able to widen the, uh, corridors. In that school a little bit. To prevent accidents and things like this, but there's a lot of things. That we've been working on. To save money. Wasn't just, it wasn't this committee, it wasn't just going out and taking that. Forty-five million dollars and saying, oh, let's do this, let's do this, let's do this. We really and truly worked hard. To make cuts so that the public would really understand what we're trying to do, and. This is gonna be presented Wednesday night, believe me, if it's possible, get there and. Support this thing wholeheartedly because it's really needed, and I'm really happy what this committee has done. Support this thing wholeheartedly because it's really needed and I'm really happy what this committee has done.
Thank you, Mr. Collmore.
Um, I'll try to go through the next slides quicker. I don't know why this does this, but. Sam hates this, but I'm gonna have to say next slide, please. So we're gonna, um, you know, the, the next slide is talking to, to the city about how HPS is helping. Um, you know, unfortunately, there is the net school spending. Law that doesn't allow you to. Like invest in capital improvements that are greater than a hundred and twenty-five thousand, so. You know, there, that was something like, hey, you guys are getting student opportunity act money, why can't you just pay for it? Um, you can't. Anything over a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in capital improvements, it's not eligible, so. It's kinda like kicking the can down the road and. Um, and then the five hundred thousand that we, we just talked about, we don't need to go into that. Another thing that I wanna highlight that, you know, we were just in city council at the end of the year. Um, asking for, so money for the accelerated repair projects. Which is gonna be brand new windows at McMahon. Brand new windows at Lawrence, brand new windows at, uh, a portion of Dunne Hughes building. And then this building getting a brand new heater, uh, uh, be a brand new boiler, cause it's, it's, it's needed. Uh, that, that project got approved, but the city said like, well, can't you guys use Esser money for that? So I went and I asked the state, can we use some Esser money for windows and doors? And they said, yeah, that would be eligible. Or, you know, air quality and all that, like they can, as they're supposed to be COVID related, so. They approved it and I've set aside two million dollars out of the four million dollars. So that the city, that's two million dollars that the city doesn't have to bond for, so another, yet another. Re, way we're, we're telling, we're, we're trying to show that we're, we're exploring every possible way to support financially. So, um. And then, um, the city will talk about the possible, so as Josh mentioned earlier. The, the, uh, marijuana money, there's some ARPA money that possibly could be used. Um, since we're bidding the demo project separately, like. The, the mayor and his team are gonna look at ways to get that forty million down, the city's portion of the forty million down. So that, um, at the end of it, we're, you know, we might not be bonding for, for the entire amount, if there's ways to. Find resources now to pay for stuff and not bond for it later. He's gonna explore every possible option that there is, um, to do that. Um, real quick, the voting. So middle of the schematic design is going to the MSBA April twenty-seventh. Uh, hopefully we have a vote and, you know, uh, finance subcommittee. Wednesday and then the full committee in May at some point, um, that would be great. And then, uh, the MSBA takes it up, once we get the city council vote. The MSBA will then take it up at their meeting on June twenty-first and then we could begin. I'm gonna be there with that gold shovel, I've never, I've never had it, I've always. Admired it and saw it in the newspaper and news and I'm like, I wanna do that one day. And I'm gonna be there with that gold shovel.
It might be your garden.
The golden sledgehammer for the demolish.
Yeah. I wanna, I wanna, I wanna do that. And I hope the city allows me to do that.
I'll bring you the shovel next meeting and a hard hat.
We got the vote language here. Um, it's a lot, but I think that, you know, this comes right from the MSBA, eighty-five million, so like. Yes, they gotta vote for the full eighty-five million, even though it's not gonna cost the city that much, it's just the way the MSBA requires it. Um, we don't need to go through that and then, and then we're gonna go through the design, so. Um, those of you that were at the public meeting where we shared this or the virtual meeting. Already seen this presentation, our designers will look at it. What you're looking at on the right-hand side is the dingo that connects to Holyoke High and then, um. Yeah, bo- bottom right corner and then up top, you can see Crozier Field. And then the, um, there's a, a couple Chapin Streets down here below. But you can see the design of the building and in the middle, there is that, that courtyard. That we hope to use and then we're gonna, you know, I'm not gonna go through all of these, but the way the building is designed is. Uh, there's two wings, one for the sixth grade, one for the seventh grade and then the third floor. Uh, so it's designed in a way where you could actually have these smaller school communities where people can get. You know, get to, you know, easy line of sight, one of the worst things about PEC, I sat there the other day. And literally I sat there for three hours and I saw, you know, student, hey, get, get back to class and they go around and. You think they're going to class and they end up coming around here, the teacher doesn't even know it. Um, and that design is, is very poor for safety reason, you look out. And you can't see what's going on down the hall. You know, um, this design actually addresses that, there's enough natural light with the interior classrooms. Just another issue with PEC, like so many of the classrooms don't even have windows, uh, which, um, you know. It's, is, is, is just like proven natural light is, is such a good thing for education and even how kids feel like. You know, it breaks my heart, but I'm gonna briefly tell you a story, first day of school, I'm sitting, I went to PEC. First day of school, see how the arrival went and Miss Urbino was there and a kid got off the bus and he just looked like, uh. And I was like, what's going on, man? First day of school, you should be happy, he's like. I ain't happy, this place is like a jail, man. I'm like, a jail? What are you talking about? Like, you get to go home. He's like, have you been in there, Mr. Soto? It's, it's in a pod and some of the windows have cages on it, tell me that doesn't feel like. But that broke my heart to, for a kid, like he's already walking into school feeling like people don't care about him. And that the city, that city doesn't care enough about him to, to have him in a school that makes him feel that way. That was, that was sad and this building is not gonna look like that or feel that way. It should be able to walk in happy and excited, bright lights, windows, nice things. Um, it's not everything, I'm not sitting here telling you like that's gonna fix everything, like no, but it's an important part. Students feeling like you care about them and like you're willing to invest in them. Is very important to getting them to wanna be there and wanna learn. That's the first floor, second floor, as Ms. Brunel talked about, will be up on that hill towards Crozier. Guild, but you know, it's really like slanted up, so that second floor will have the gym up there with the cafeteria. Um, and, and then some of the, you know, the art room, mu- media center, things like that. Uh, we went through this extensively and we have a presentation online. Uh, where, where we're go, we're running through it and going through each of these spaces, so we don't need to go through that, but. The city council will have an opportunity to see that design, the front entrance and then we'll, we'll open it up for questions.
Does anybody have any further questions? We're good. Thank you very much, we wish you luck on Wednesday. Strategic plan feedback was next Sunday on your reports.
Yeah, so I don't have a, a ton on this, I just wanted to let you know that we've done a lot, um, to gather feedback on the strategic plan, we've had. Several community meetings, several focus groups, um, informal conversations, we have a survey out there. Um, and then there's a team of people like the advisory group. That is made up of a couple principals, cabinet members, I wanna thank Jay Willehan, who's a part of. Is also a part of that advisory committee where, uh, and we're gonna be meeting on May first. To really just reflect on the feedback itself, what did we hear? Um, and, and what changes do we wanna make for next year? Uh, so we're, we're really looking flo- forward to that and then our plan is to have. You know, once we, we go through that meeting and identify what our priorities are, what our main projects are. It'll, it'll give, um, you know, uh, people that are managing those projects enough time. Over the summer to really, really narrow it down and, and, and enter the school year with a strong, solid plan that reflects our priorities. And that reflects all the feedback that we had gotten.
Thank you, gonna go ahead and move on to new business. And what we have here is the approval of meeting minutes for the finance subcommittee, um. So I'm just gonna say this real quickly. Um, the January twenty-third one, I don't have that one, I have two of the three twenty. So. Um.
I'm just doing the, uh, March twentieth.
No, no, so should we do like a motion to table? The approval of the one twenty-three one, bring it next month?
Yeah, I still have it.
Okay, so is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Wilson, seconded by. Uh, I'm, oh, Mr. Collmore, um, to table the finance subcommittee, meeting minutes of one twenty-three. Um, approval. So any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes, sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Mr. Romero.
Yes.
Mr. Rivera Cologne? Yes. Ms. Feliciano? Yes. Mr. Willehan?
Yes.
Mr. Collmore?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, so we'll go ahead and bring that next, next, um, month. Um, so now do I have a motion to, um, accept? The meeting minutes from the finance subcommittee dated on March twentieth, we have a motion by Ms. Wilson, seconded by Ms. Feliciano, any discussion?
Yes, actually.
Okay, so we, um, Ms. Brunel.
So I just wanted to make a comment that, um. You know, we're gonna start going through these trainings to get a receivership and such. And I think the receiver needs to consider, uh. Fully supplying administrative help to the subcommittees, um. Pre-receivership, we had Liz LaFawn who took minutes for our subcommittees and. Um, we don't have that support at finance and we're meeting quite often and I think. For Jay to have to do minutes himself and for other committee chairs to have to take minutes themselves, so. I just wanted to take the opportunity to air that, uh, we do have administrative support on the joint school committee, city council meeting, uh, subcommittee. And I feel like we need to start gearing back towards having full administrative support on all, all of our subcommittees.
Can I add to that?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Brunel, Ms. Wilson.
I think the other piece is, is that we are violating open committee meeting rules because the meeting was not. Uh, recorded nor livestreamed, um, and I myself have difficulties doing that, um, for the policy subcommittee. So I do believe we are in violation of open meeting laws because we do, we are not accessible. Um, even if we post the link and we don't use it, cause I don't have capability of doing that on a consistent basis.
Mr. Willehan.
Yeah, um, I just, uh. Concur with Mrs. Wilson, the minutes, I don't mind doing the minutes, okay, so. That's fine, but just having the support to make sure the minutes are televised and or recorded. Yeah, that has to take place, the last time we came here for the meeting and there was no one back there, so it's just. You know, we're, we're by ourselves trying to, trying to piece it together, so the technical support is, uh, is something that I'm looking for.
So I am trying really hard to think back before receivership. Whether we had anything televised, it wouldn't have been on Zoom at all. Um, but back then it would have, and I'm not recalling that any of our subcommittees. Other than the joint city council school committee was televised, I know. Um, city council televises their subcommittee meetings, um. But it wasn't a practice for us.
Yeah, well, the law has changed, right?
Well, it's not mandated, it's not mandated that we have to televise it.
I think they should be recorded at least.
Recorded.
Is it man?
That's what the minutes are for, no?
Um, because we are posting when the meeting is.
But if we are sharing a Zoom link, I'm sorry, may I?
Go ahead, Ms. Wilson.
Thank you, if we are sharing that there is a Zoom link for these subcommittee meetings. And I cannot get on the internet in order to open a Zoom meeting link. Then, uh, then I feel I'm in violation because I, we, we portrayed. That we would have this availability to our city population, that they would be able to take part in the meeting, at least watching it. And they are not able to do so, that is my concern, so I say that we stop saying then that we're, we, we no longer have Zoom links. To these meetings, either people are in person, if that's the way we wanna go, but I have to say, researching. Managing and doing everything for the policy committee, it is very challenging to keep up with. Running this, learning the process and actually managing to take appropriate and complete notes is challenging.
So I am gonna say that now what you're mentioning is about how we have the Zoom link in the. In the announcement, yes, that is correct, if we're putting on there that it's on Zoom. That has to be accessible, right?
I can't do it.
Now, the part where it was saying live, um, livestreamed, recorded, that's the part where I'm like. I don't recall us ever being televised for our subcommittees, un- unlike. Joint city council school committee. So with that being said, I will look into it further. Um.
But, but.
See pre-receivership, okay? Um, and see what we can do, but if we need more full support to that, again, we. We want to be an effective school committee, right? And it's kinda hard running a meeting, typing up the notes, running a meeting, typing up the notes. Um, you're gonna forget something along the way, um, but I'll look into that, um, Mr. Willehan.
Thank you, yeah, um, again, having it on Zoom allows one of our members to participate remotely. So with a three-member. Subcommittee, it's hard to get a quorum as it is, so if someone can't be here live and someone's sick.
Yeah.
Okay, so it, it makes it a challenge to have the meeting at all, so that's the benefit of having it zoomed. Okay, and I'm not a techie, so I just would request some support to have it, if we're gonna say it's zoomed, as Mrs. Wilson said, shibby.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think, um, can I answer?
Yeah, I was gonna say. Mayor Garcia.
Um, I was gonna add and I'm probably off, but just wanted to clarify, um. So, when the Zoom option. When, when a public meeting is posted and you have the Zoom link there, I don't think it's just a Zoom link, cause there's also the call-in number as well. But either way, when all technology. Um. Doesn't work the way you want it to work, if all fails, there's no violation of anything as far as the open meeting law is concerned. I think the law requires as long as the next day, you post the minutes or whatever record you have. Um, immediately for viewing, I, it doesn't answer the, the immediate concern, but just. As far as the, the eyes of the laws are concerned. We're in compliant, we're in good standing, if technology fails, it doesn't mean we're not in compliant with the law, but again, if the Zoom, if the technical. Link is not working, there is the call-in feature as well. So there's multiple, uh, options available as far as technology is concerned, but if both options fail after being posted. And there's a quorum at the meeting, the meeting can still continue as long as the record of that meeting is posted immediately, just wanted to. I'm not sure if this is at all relevant to what's being discussed at the moment, but just wanted to clarify the law.
Thank you. Okay, oh, Mr. Collmore.
We've been through this many, many times. And the posting, it doesn't have to say Zoom. You, you just post the minutes in the, you post the time in the meeting and then. Whoever has it. Time in the meeting and then whoever has it. They conduct the meeting as long as we must have a secretary. Or the chairman of that committee. Writing up the minutes. The other thing, the other thing, uh. They just, you discussed was three, three members on the committee. I wholeheartedly believe, and I think we went through this before. We made it five members on a committee. So that, so that. The only, even though if you had five. The quorum is still only three. This would help tremendously, you know, uh, getting a quorum here. And it, it's hard, it's really hard to get a, a quorum of, of three, but if we make it five members. Then there's flexibility there and, uh, you can get three there without any problem. I think you ought to have, listen that you don't need Zoom i- in there. We don't need Zoom here at all. At a regular meeting, you have to, at a regular meeting, but not, not a subcommittee meeting, you don't need that Zoom. You just have to. Make sure that you have a secretary. The secretary can't make it, that the chairman of that committee. Write some, uh, the minutes. Now. What they did say, someone said that twenty-four hours after the meeting, you have to have to report it. Well, well, that's, that's not right because the minutes are not official. Until you approve them at the next meeting. Or, or not approve them because of some glitch or something like this. But once they're approved by this whole committee, that's, that's when the time counts. And twenty-four hours after that, it's open to the public.
Thank you, Mr. Colomore. I'm just, he wanted to give a clarification, so superintendent, receivers.
Yeah, it's, it's not really clarification, I just want to respond like. Guys are talking about a time when the only role of a person was to be the secretary of the school committee. You know, through time, you know, Sam's actually my assistant. And she's doing this in a stipended role. And that was under the impression that there was going to be twelve meetings a, a year, or ten meetings a year, right, so. If the, if the school committee does desire to get additional support, we would have to, you know, there's fu- funding involved, there's. You know, like, she's. It, it's, you know, you talk about Jeff Anderson Burgos, like, that's his only job, he's not also doing a full-time job, so. Um, I think, you know, Sam's been doing a great job with, with what, you know, in her dual roles, but if, if. The expectation is that we have somebody at every single subcommittee, then we do have to have a conversation about, about staffing. Because that's not, that's not manageable for, for the structure that we have right now. Which is her having a full-time job and doing that, it's just not doable, so we would have to consider. You know, hiring somebody just to do the sco- the subcommittees. Or, or, you know, just have a separate conversation, I'm open to. I don't know who wants to have that conversation with me, but I'm open to having that. Uh, but it's not as easy as just saying, alright, Sam's going to do all the meetings, like, that's not the, what she agreed to and, and that's not, you know. She, she has a whole nother job aside from, you know, what she's been doing. Um, which is different than what the structure that we had in the past where the, the, the council. Committee had their, their own assistant, and that's, that was their primary role. You know, we've, we've consolidated that and like. She's doing both roles. Um, it's not, it, it's not going to be manageable, I can tell you that right now. Um, if, if the expectation is that she's doing that, and with the tech issues too, the same thing, like. It's not, we don't have somebody. Demand that every single meeting, we have them for the school committee meeting, so. Come budget time, if that's, you know, if you guys want to consider or have a conversation, we just sent the, uh. Budget, the school committee budget, if that's something that you want us to consider increasing the budget for. Um, then we, we could certainly start to have that conversation.
I know I had Mr. Wallahan, then, um, Ms. Brunel.
Thank you. Yeah, Sam, you know, she, she helps me out with the, the agenda and. Notification, so she's been a great help to me, you know, the minutes, I'm fine doing the minutes, I do it for my. Regular job at work, so it's, it's nothing that I'm not used to doing. So I'll make that known for myself. Um, in terms of the minutes being approved and accessible, I think the law says if someone requests. Minutes, you have to provide them in a draft form when they're available. So usually the draft form's in my head. I don't, so it's personally notes written down and in my head, so that was. But I think you still have, um, some time to provide that, doesn't have to be on the spot. So, um, the minutes are, um, work in progress, again, if. Bigger conversation is, we want to take advantage of the technology that we want to go through. And it, it's there too, so that, that's my point, it's there, do we want to use it or not, that's another conversation, thank you.
Could consider getting a whole.
Ms. Brunel.
Yeah, I mean, Anthony, that's exactly the point, right, is it was two positions and now it's one. And the authority lies with the receiver to change that because the authority lied with the receiver to change it then. So, you know, when we first were under receivership, we didn't have all of our subcommittees functioning like we do now. Um, so I do believe that that's something that the, that your office should look into, I, I, I don't disagree with you that Sam can't. Play all of those roles, i- and it's nothing to, to Sam's effort or anything, it's, it is a two-person job. You, you, there was Jeannie and there was Liz, there, it, you know, and that got consolidated. And so you, that's just something that, you know, budget-wise, we might need to look into moving forward. As we're looking to come out of receivership, we are going to need to fo- more fully staff. The, the school committee assistant administrative role, so that's why I'm bringing it up because it is not in our purview. Because we don't have control of the budget right now. Um, so that's why I brought it up and I just wanted to start to begin to have that conversation as we move forward.
Mayor Garcia?
Right, Erin said exactly what I was going to say, the school board before receivership was. Very busy with multiple meetings, committee meetings. Um, uh, which, you know, as a budget manager, yeah, it makes sense. To, uh, budget for, um, staff needs for the school board. Obviously, when receivership took over, it was less need and. Um, and, you know, there was savings opportunities to consolidate because we weren't as biddy, as busy. Uh, but looking ahead, you know, I think as we prepare for transition into local control and. The committees start getting active in the practice of trying to. Um, you know. Act as if we were in control. And we transition over, it probably would be a good idea to start. You know, and Anthony, just for, for your, you know, for your thought as you go forward and you work on your budget for future years. To start thinking about how. Um. To prepare for that, um, the staffing needs of this committee and separating apart, um, going back to what it was pre. So that we have the, the, the staffing capabilities to keep up with the, the committee needs. Um, I, I, I think. You know, there's a couple of models out there, I'm sure you can, you know, from your experiences working in Springfield or just even talking to the commissioner. What other school districts are doing, but as it gets busy, we, we don't want to spread thin Sam either. Or even make her think about going somewhere else for that matter. Um, and so, you know, this, this body is going to get busy. So it's probably be a good idea to start planning ahead of how you want to. You know, pivot so that you're meet, you're, you're keeping up with the needs of this body, you know, with your budget. Um, I don't think what you're doing, I don't think what Anthony did, you know, this is intentional takeaway support from the school board, it's just. You know, a savings at that time because we haven't been busy. But now that we got committee meetings and there will be more, I'm sure they will be. Um, you know, it, it's probably about a good time to start thinking about how to, how to keep up with that.
Thank you, so I'm just gonna kind of refocus everyone, because when I asked. Was there any discussion based on the? On the approval of the meeting minutes dated three twenty, which was on finance. We kind of veered a different way and I get it, you know, that's why I let you guys all have your space here, but. Um, yeah, these are conversations that we're going to have to have. Um, just not tonight, I just want to know, is there any discussion on the finance subcommittee? Meeting minutes dated three twenty, Erin, do not raise your hand. Okay, hearing no discussion on that, um, can we get roll call, please?
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Brunel?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera Colom?
Yes.
Ms. Feliciano?
Yes.
Mr. Wallahan?
Yes.
Mr. Calomore?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Great, so motion passes unanimously. Moving on to ongoing business, FYI, as always, um, we always make sure that we keep the special education staffing update in here. I didn't see it in, in regards.
I didn't have a, um, I didn't have a formal update, I would, I just wanted to speak to. You know, we're still kind of where we were since the last month. Um, and I wanted to kind of, uh. Reinforce that next year is not looking any better, based on early indications that we have, so. For example, Teach Western Mass is one of our partners that helps. Find teachers, uh, uh, teacher residents. Um, and they supply us, you know, they, they train them, they, they provide them with coaching. And they're doing away with their, their residency program, which means we're not going to have any. Any candidates through Teach Western Mass next year. Um, which is, which is unfortunate, so, uh, they didn't have enough candidates in the pipeline. So that, that to me is a hint of like. That this isn't over yet and we're going to continue to see some staffing shortages. Um, right now, we're in the middle of budget season and we're projecting about fifty-one vacancies. Um, of which fourteen are, are special education. For next year, obviously the, you know. Hiring season, so we hope to see those numbers go down, but that's the picture that we're looking at for next year.
Thank you, any questions? Nope. Um, oh, Mr. Wallahan?
Thank you, uh, what percent is, um, the forty percent? Um, what percent is that for, uh, vacancy, like, um, ten percent o- of the staff or?
Um, I don't want to give you a number, but we have about five hundred and. Teachers. I could do the math for you.
Alright, chronic absenteeism, the update is in the packet, it's also available and accessible to the public. There any discussion, any questions? Nope, okay. So moving on to updates from subcommittees, we're going to go ahead and start with the policy subcommittee.
We have not had a meeting, sorry, we have not had a meeting, I am looking to schedule, um, either May first or May eighth. I'm going to be getting, um, together with the committee members, subcommittee members to determine which date would work best for them. Um, looking for like a six P M. start. And probably breaking down the finance, um, into two sections. Because I think it's going to be a little more robust conversation for us.
The finance or the?
We're, 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 we're going to be moving to the finance.
Okay.
Area of our policies.
Yep.
And I think based on feedback and everything, I think it's wiser to have a more thorough conversation. Rather than rush through it, so we're probably going to break that down into two meetings.
I just have a quick question for you, any update on the other ones?
We, we have not met, so we have to come back to committee. Meet and then send it back here for final approval and.
Okay.
From our, uh.
And recommendation, okay. Sounds great. Um, finance subcommittee.
Thank you, yeah, um, we just had a posting problem, the meeting tonight. What was in your packet didn't appear on the website, the city website, that's the official posting requirement, so I apologize to that. Uh, so we'll, I'll work with the administration, um, work with Sam, see if we can get another date going for the next, uh. Just got a quick question for Dr. Soto, um, in terms of when the budget has to be approved. Or a budget hearing date you have in.
Yeah, well.
You'd have to commit tonight.
I presented that at, uh, previous meeting, the budget calendar, I don't have the date off the top of my head, but we can, we can make sure that. Um, I, you know, I'm hoping to present a, a status or a balanced budget in a meeting. Um, that, that would be my, you know, my rough timeline, which would give an opportunity for. Committee to ask questions, like, um, how we got balance, what's in it, what's not, and then. Um, so that when we, because the actual public hearing is, is. Meeting because all the work gets done that meeting before. And they, um, go through the whole presentation and get your input.
Thank you.
Right, we just want to make sure that we get the date well ahead because then there's a, a posting that has to be done in the newspaper. Um, and that's the two weeks. So the length of time for notification, uh, we got to make sure we get that in. Uh, Ms. Wilson?
I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, to send to this finance subcommittee, the discussion of, uh. Looking into hiring someone to help. Um, the subcommittees with meeting minutes as well as other needs.
So there's a motion, um, to.
Send the finance subcommittee to review.
A possible, like, uh.
Review the, the, the cost that might be associated with having that in order to make a recommendation to the full sc-. School committee and to the receiver in the future.
So it would be for, for a position?
Yes. To look, to look into.
Or stipend.
Yeah, to, to, to look into how many hours, I think the finance subcommittee would be able to look into like. How many hours, what the role would entail, you know, in order to make that recommendation going forward to the full body.
So the role of the administrative assistant to the school committee?
Correct.
Okay. So we have a motion by Ms. Wilson, is there a second? Do we have it seconded by Mr. Colomore? Okay, he was first, so Mr. Romero, seconded by Mr. Romero. Um, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Garcia?
Yeah?
Ms. Faith?
Yes.
Ms. Brunel?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera Colom?
Yes.
Feliciano?
Yes.
Mr. Wallahan?
Yes.
Mr. Calomore?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, so that will be a task for the finance subcommittee to look at. Uh, the role and the requirements. Based on time and funding. Okay. The next one up is the joint city council school committee, Ms. Brunel.
Yeah, uh, so we did meet and we approved our minutes from last September, I believe, so Sam can, uh, get the full committee. Copy of those and we can approve those at the next meeting if you want, Mildred. Um, and then, let's see, uh, there's a lot of conversation from the, uh, city. What's the, I just like, can see you looking crazy, um, there was a lot of.
You said September?
Yeah, we, this, so there's just been so very little on our agenda and we only meet so infrequent. That we can't approve minutes unless we meet, so we were, we approved our minutes from September. Um, at our last meeting, that was two we- uh, a week and a half ago.
Ooh, I.
Was it September? Yeah, September, I'm pretty sure, right, Sam?
I'm going to have to look at the timeframe for, for approval of minutes, but, um. I think there's also, um, requirements even for subcommittees, like. Imagine see, doing a subcommittee.
Doesn't the subcommittee have to approve the minutes to refer them back to the full committee, so if the subcommittee doesn't meet, how do we approve our minutes?
That's where we turn around and say that the subcommittee should be meeting. Um, it shouldn't be an annual thing, or imagine if it was annual? And you were coming back one year later to approve minutes from a year ago? Right now, you're.
No, I.
For seven months ago.
I agree completely. I agree with you completely. It's just our, our side doesn't really send much to that committee. So it's like waiting for some orders to be filed by council to fulfill an agenda worth meeting for. Um, but let me know. I'm happy to schedule more frequent meetings, um. You know, definitely happy to meet more frequently. Uh, the agenda was posted, the meeting was recorded and broadcasted. If anybody wants to watch a recording of it, um, and then I'll schedule us another meeting soon to get those minutes approved so that we can share them back.
Sounds great. So that's why I was looking a little crazy.
I'm like, what is the look for? I can't like talk to you in person.
But thank you so much. Um, and last but not least, diversity, equity and inclusion subcommittee, Ms. Feliciano.
Can I repeat what I said last time?
You can do whatever you feel like.
I got nothing.
Okay.
No information, no nothing.
Alrighty, thank you so much. Now we're moving on to out-of-state field trips.
Yeah, so, um, what, you know, in the spirit of, you know, we talked about what are some of the things that the school committee? Um, could, could be more involved with that traditional school committees are and. One of them is out-of-state field trips. We've been, we haven't had a ton of them, but they have been coming in. And I've been approving them, but I wanna make it, uh, practice that like every time we get one. Be added to the school committee packet so that you guys know what out-of-state field trips are, are going on. In the, uh, in the school district. So that's that. Um.
Ms. Wilson?
Motion to approve.
I'm, I have questions. Sorry, sir. Um, and I was called on.
Discussion?
Just, yeah, I was already called on, thank you. Um, so my question is for the number of adults. Um, I don't see in any of these forms where there's clarification if the adults, um, are, uh, school. Employees, um, from the standpoint, I know if there's a medical need, the parent can come along and they have to quarry. I just wanna ensure that any adults that are going on these field trips with our students have been quarried and fingerprinted.
Yes. So they've been quarried, I, I can get back to you on the whole fingerprinting.
Yeah, cuz I, I just feel like the number of adults, I feel like we should change that into number of HPS employees and outside. And that way we might be able to monitor that better. Just thoughts.
Thank you. All right, so that sounds great. And last but not least, because we can't approve the out-of-state. Mayor Garcia, not yet. Pretty soon.
Motion to recommend to the. I don't know, were you looking for us to approve anything or you just letting us know?
He's letting us know.
I'm trying to make it common practice that every time I approve an out-of-state.
Okay.
Field trip, that it comes to the school committee and I've been telling principals and everybody that like that's gonna be the practice moving forward. Um, that whenever we get a, a out-of-state field trip request, I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna approve it, assuming. You know, everything is, is aligned, you know, noth- nothing crazy. Um, and then, and then I'm gonna make sure that the school committee gets to see it at the next school committee meeting. Um, so it's just, I'm just trying to get.
But under local control, any out-of-state field trips has to be approved by the board, right?
Unless you delegate that to the superintendent, yes.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, no, thank you.
And I would say that's.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead, finish your sentence.
No, I was gonna go to the.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Say, along the same lines, uh, included in your packet is a list of all of our student activities. And this is one thing that like finally I, we got a good baseline of all the activities out there. Moving forward, if any school wants to start their own club or activity, that is something that I'm asking the school committee to vote on. Um, you know, even if it, you know, with a field trip, if they're. You know, I don't want the kids not to go, but with a club, like, I wanna make sure that the school committee is, is approving any new clubs. New student activities that we create, which is, you know, which is just good practice. So I know that we have a, a couple that, that Sam's gonna add to the next agenda. Like, uh, the, for example, the, the, uh, dean started a weight, a weight room club, right? So a fitness club, um, that's one that, you know, I wanna, I wanna, like, there's other clubs out there where. Schools are asking, can we start this club? I wanna make sure we get those on the, moving forward, we get those on this school committee agenda for approval.
So just out of curiosity, the Holyoke Middle School wouldn't be on here, the cheer team?
Um, she, that's what she was talking about. She hasn't, she hasn't established a student activity.
Okay.
Fund, um, which would go through that process. She, you know, she would say, okay, I'm gonna be the advisor of that club. Here's gonna be my student rep of that club and then, you know, once, once we get the approval to set them up as a student activity, then they could. Then they'll, they'll get their own account in munis and they'll be able to fundraise, deposit money and do all that stuff.
Okay, sounds good. All right, so has everybody he- heard, you know, moving forward, any new clubs? Then, um, they'll seek our, our voting for an approval. Mr. Callimer?
Yes, uh, the superintendent was talking about what we're doing in the schools this year. What are we doing this year because it's the hundred and fiftieth anniversary of our city? Is this, are the students getting involved? Are the school committee gonna get involved? In any kind of functions for, to celebrate this city?
I'm not aware of anything that the school department is doing as it relates to the one hundred and fiftieth anniversary. I know I was at the, at, I was personally at the celebration at city hall, but. Um. I, I'm not aware of anything.
Ms. Wilson?
Are we gonna do, do you know if we're gonna do anything?
Not currently in the, in the works. I'm not su- there could be some teachers out there that may be getting in the spirit. I don't. Like, it's not something we're doing district-wide. I can tell you that right now. Like, um, but I, I, I don't know if there's a, you know, if there's a history teacher out there that might have students working on something. That could be the case, but I, I'm, I'm just not aware of it right now. I can ask.
Okay, then, uh, I'll just bring this up, uh, because we're talking about history. Just, just a couple of days ago, uh, the commissioner of education was here. And, uh, I got to talk to him about. Our school system and he says. As far as I'm concerned, the people of Holyoke should be very, very proud of our schools. Conditions and the curriculum that's been set up for our students. And this is something that. My heart feels very good that the commissioner of education would come here and make this statement for the city of. It, it broke my heart to feel, but I have to say this because we're talking about history. This happened in eighteen sixty-four. In the city of Holyoke. That, that's just a little bit of, of history that the commissioner of education in eighteen sixty-four. Came, came and, uh, said that to the people of.
Thank goodness that you just clarified that because I'm looking at you like Commissioner Riley was here. Where was I? Um, I had no idea. Mr. Callimer spoke to him and I'm thinking. And it was the commissioner of education back in eighteen sixty-four.
That's right.
Oh my.
That's right.
Alrighty. Thank you. Um, Ms. Wilson?
So I would assume, um, in response to your question about the city of Holyoke, anyone, it would be Quentin Dunnehue. Um, cuz he does run the club about the history of Holyoke. Um, and he, I, I, so I think if anyone would be doing it, it would be Quentin. Dunnehue. So I, I will personally follow with him.
Thank you. All right, so moving forward, we're gonna go to announcements, just so everyone is aware. Tomorrow, school building committee meeting via Zoom. That's Zoom only, six P M. Wednesday, the CPAC meeting regarding transition planning at six P M. And that'll be held at Dunnehue School. And of course, your school committee representatives, Ms. Feliciano, Ms. Brunel and myself. Our goal is to get two words right at the homeworks house spelling bee. I think we could do it this time. Um, that is our goal. If we pass it.
So sorry in advance, guys. I'm really no help to this team, but you know, it's a good time.
If we pass the.
I'm always like, I don't know.
And we get three words right. The expectation is that we are given a trophy. Um, because we exceeded our goal, right? And so I can't wait. Five to eight. Yeah, figure it out, Sam. Three words. Um, on May first, the following Monday is the quarterly three attendance celebration, five thirty at Sullivan School. On May third is the Pioneer Valley Excellence in Teaching, right? Awards dinner at five P M. I don't know where that's held. Um, and then on the fourth is the middle school building committee meeting again via Zoom at six P M. Do we have the LPAC meeting date or anything?
Um.
Five P M. On the third, on the first, May first, quarterly three attendance celebration, five P M. At Sullivan School. Okay, excellent. Mr. Callimer?
Mentioned. Special meeting Wednesday evening.
Well, I mentioned the CPAC meeting Wednesday evening and just a friendly reminder, everyone. That on Wednesday also at city council, the finance subcommittee, correct? Will be meeting and so we can go and support our. Our mayor, our, the chair or the vice chair, which is Erin Brunel, so she's representing us there. And our superintendent receiver. And that's at six P M. At.
Six thirty.
Six thirty, city council chambers. All right.
Yes, please.
And I think I have, there's two more announcements, Ms. Brunel?
Um, oh shoot, I'm forgetting now. Go to Josh first, sorry.
Mayor Garcia?
Uh, May sixteen, I'm gonna be delivering the state of the city at the city council chambers. At six thirty, where we'll be presenting the FY twenty-four proposed city budget. That's also the day, so following that. State of the city address is the full council meeting. Where we're planning for the vote authorization to take place of the full council for the school building. So May sixteen. Beginning, beginning at six thirty for state of the city. And the full council meets at seven, doing regular business. And they plan to take up the vote, well, assuming all goes well on Wednesday with the finance committee. They plan to take on the, um, the vote for the authorization.
Ms. Brunel?
Uh, I just wanted to touch base and see if we were doing, if we were, if you had looked into us going to the Latino Scholarship Fund Dinner. So if so, then that would need to be discussed, uh, to, for attendance.
I am going to start with Ms. Garcia about that.
Okay, thanks.
How, and if you guys can just send me a quick email, um, your interest or te- or, you know, however. Just let me know if you're interested, if you're available, um, so that way, because I think it's in tables of ten.
Yeah, and Rising Stars is coming up too in May.
Yeah, aren't we doing Rising Stars already pretty soon? It's typically a May, isn't it?
Yep, um, so that's scheduled for May twenty-fifth. I did send out a calendar invite to everyone. Um, on the school committee for that. I do have many members accepted, so that's from five thirty to nine P M. Um, here at Dean.
May twenty, May twenty-fifth?
May twenty-fifth, yep. And then there is a LPAC meeting scheduled on May third. I'm just also gonna note, that's my birthday, if anybody doesn't know. Um, from five thirty, from five thirty to six thirty.
May third?
Yep. From five thirty to seven for LPAC.
Oh, and you're gonna be working that day?
I work, yes.
Okay, very good. All right. That was a lot of stuff that I've had to write down. Um, I'll follow up with you after. All right, guys, that's everything that I have. Our next school committee meeting is scheduled for May. Fifteenth, um, here, and then the twenty-second will be our. Second training, okay, here as well, because then the following week is Memorial Day, okay? So, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
So Ms. Wilson, seconded by Ms. Feliciano, sin. Felici- oh my gosh, I am so sorry by Ms. Feliciano. I know. I don't think I have a ride tonight home.
I'm an Uber. I'll take you home, Mildred.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Fave? Yes. Ms. Brunel?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera Colom?
Yes.
Ms. Feliciano?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Wellinghan?
Yes.
Mr. Callamore?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wilson? Yes. Motion passes. We are adjourned, meeting and officially ends at eight thirty-four P M. Thank you, everyone. We'll see you in, in next month.